Welcome to the October 8, 2024 City Council Meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Webb.
Here.
Mayor Proton Sullivan.
Here.
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 Takes us to the special present approval of the agenda, the revised agenda. Sorry, getting ahead of myself.
We have a Luke also.
I'm also here.
Didn't hear you.
She didn't call.
We just got impatient waiting. I'm sorry.
I don't. I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Support. A dissension changes discussion. Okay, moves us to the motion passes. Special presentation, proclamation to name October 2024 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month program is dedicated to increasing knowledge about the importance and early detection of breast cancer and whereas this year is an estimated 310, 720,000 Americans will be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer, with one in eight women being diagnosed at some point within their lives, making it the second most commonly diagnosed form of cancer among American women. And whereas this resolution will highlight in the ongoing efforts to raise awareness for breast cancer research, detection, treatment, it is owed to the estimate 42,250 women who will be lost this year to breast cancer, as well as the millions of survivors to do everything possible to support the fight against this terrible disease. Being known, I, Michael Webb, may hereby proclaim October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Hazel Park, Michigan. I call upon the citizens of our community and agencies, organizations, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to prevent, treat, and ultimately cure this disease. Thank you. So move.
Mr. Mayor, on behalf of my wife and the many other survivors of breast cancer, I want to thank you for this proclamation and thank the other members of council. It is indeed a horrific disease and we need more research money for breast cancer and all cancers. So, thank you for the proclamation.
Yeah, I have a mother-in-law that's over 35 years survivor of it.
Same with my wife, over 30 years.
Yeah, it's a miracle that a lot of people go through this, as well as some men. And watching people go through cancer in any way or shape or form is a challenge in trying to help them as best way we can is try to find resources for them. Thank you. You want to do the next proclamation?
Certainly. Proclamation declaring October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Hazel Park. Whereas domestic violence is the willful intimidation, physical assault, battery, sexual assault, and/or other abusive behavior as part of a systemic pattern of power control perpetrated by one intimate partner against another. It includes physical violence, sexual violence, threats, and emotional abuse. The frequency and severity of domestic violence can vary dramatically. And whereas domestic violence is prevalent in every community and affects people, all people regardless of age, socioeconomic status, sexual orientation, gender, race, religion, or nationality. Physical violence is often accompanied by emotionally abusive and controlling behavior as part of a much larger systemic pattern of dominance and control. Domestic violence can result in physical injury, psychological trauma, and even death. The devastating consequences of domestic violence can cross generations and last a lifetime. And whereas in the United States, one in four women and one in nine men experience sexual violence, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner during their lifetime. And whereas thousands of individuals in Oakland County are impacted by domestic violence each year. And whereas domestic violence and abusive family members can take many forms, including physical, sexual, emotional, financial, and psychological battering, where abusers use intimidations, threats, isolation, and a variety of other behaviors to maintain fear and power. And whereas domestic violence can be prevented with the development of educational programs. Every citizen has the ability to aid and assist those suffering from domestic violence issues and let victims know that support is available through shelters, hotlines, and other services. And whereas domestic violence is a tremendous concern among community leaders, police, judges, advocates, healthcare workers, and concerned Americans as they work together across the nation to develop solutions for this serious problem and to implement services that will improve our responses when it occurs. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is a time to increase education and intervention efforts to improve public safety awareness of the severity of the crime and to help prevent violence and reduce the related cost to society. And whereas the city of Hazel Park works with organizations such as Oakland County, Common Ground, and Help Against Violent Encounters Now, also known as Haven, including the High Risk Response Team, in efforts to eliminate domestic violence through treatment and prevention services. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Hazel Park does hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
So move. We have a resolution here. Would Chief Story please come to the podium? Welcome, sir.
Welcome. Evening, everybody.
Before we get started here, I want to say thank you for all the years and dedication to your department and to yourself and to our city.
Very welcome. Thanks for the opportunity to serve. Pleasure being here.
If I may. Mr. Mayor, members of council, it is with both great gratitude and some sorrow that I will miss him and the outstanding job that he has done that I will read this resolution, this well-deserved resolution into the record. City of Hazel Park, a resolution honoring Fire Chief Richard Story. Whereas Fire Chief Richard Story has dedicated nearly 30 years of exemplary service to the Hazel Park Fire Department, demonstrating unwavering commitment to the safety and well-being of our community. And whereas Chief Story has shown outstanding leadership, guiding his team through countless emergencies, and fostering a culture of professionalism, courage, and compassion. And whereas that leadership ability was on display from his first days as Fire Chief when he led his department to begin clearing trash and debris from our city streets in the aftermath of the great flood of 2014. And whereas, under his direction, the Hazel Park Fire Department has implemented innovative programs, enhanced community outreach, and improved fire safety education, significantly benefiting the residents of Hazel Park. And whereas Chief Story has served as a mentor and role model to many firefighters, inspiring them to pursue excellence and maintain the highest standards of service. And whereas his dedication to training and preparedness has ensured the Hazel Park Fire Department remains ready to respond to any situation with skill and efficiency. And whereas Chief Story has personally demonstrated his courage and competence at fires and emergency situations too numerous to list, earning the respect of his own department as well as the respect of all city employees and the residents of Hazel Park. Whereas, as Chief Story embarks on his well-deserved retirement, the community of Hazel Park acknowledges his remarkable career and the positive impact he has made in Hazel Park. So, now therefore be it resolved the City of Hazel Park Council hereby honors Fire Chief Richard Story for his nearly three decades of dedicated service and expresses its deepest gratitude for his contributions to our community and wishes him the best in his future endeavors. Chief, it is with great pleasure I present to you this resolution on behalf of the mayor and council and the residents of Hazel Park.
Thank you very much, mayor and council. This means a lot. Like I said, my livelihood has been from this city and glad to have served it and this makes me feel great. So, hope the best with what goes on in the future. I'm sure we'll be just fine and wish the well for everybody. My phone number's not going to change. Please don't call it unless you have to.
Thank you, Rich.
Take care, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Would Tom Jones please come to the podium?
Come on up, Tom Jones. This is another one I'm pleased to present, but I will miss Tom Jones. Very dedicated, very innovative, very ingenious with how he solved problems and manages the resources that we've given him to work with.
Don't forget, he's a lifelong resident here.
And a lifelong resident. A resolution honoring Tom Jones for his 28 years of dedicated service as superintendent to the Department of Public Works. Whereas Tom Jones has served the city of Hazel Park with unwavering dedication and commitment for 28 years, rising through the ranks to become superintendent of Public Works. And whereas during his tenure time has demonstrated exemplary leadership and professionalism, significantly contributing to the improvement of Hazel Park's infrastructure and public services. And whereas, under Tom's direction, the Department of Public Works has successfully undertaken numerous projects, including but not limited to: street and road repairs, tree planting, snow removal, facilities upgrades and repairs, service on the soccer board, organizing the Earth Day program, equipment acquisition, and assisting with emergency response, all of which have enhanced the quality of life for Hazel Park residents. Whereas Tom has been an active volunteer and community member as well, serving as a volunteer on the Hazel Park Recreation Board and operating an award-winning haunted house in Hazel Park for many years. And whereas Tom's work ethic, ingenuity, and positive attitude have earned him the respect and admiration of colleagues, city officials, and the residents of Hazel Park. And whereas, as Tom retires, he leaves behind a legacy of excellence and a department well-prepared for future challenges. So, therefore be it resolved that the Hazel Park, the City Council of Hazel Park hereby honors and commends Tom Jones for his exceptional service to the city and its residents. Be it further resolved that the Hazel Park City Council expresses its heartfelt gratitude and best wishes to Tom for a happy and fulfilling retirement. Tom, it is with great pleasure and also, like I said, a little bit of sadness because we will miss you and what you brought to the table for how you ran the DPW department. I present to you this resolution. Thank you for your service.
It's definitely been a pleasure. Been here a long time and, you know, this is part of my life, so it's going to be, it's pretty surreal to go forward. But I'm ready to start my next chapter in life, but I have no regrets here and it's been a pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
I'm very happy to be here in front of you with these fine people with me. Who I have here with me is, or persons with the Oakland Community Health Network. And I'll start off with, prior to my appointment as chief, the city administration, along with the administrations in Madison Heights, Ferndale, and Royal Oak, had decided and they've, that their police officers needed more help. When it comes to mental health crisis, we just don't have all the equipment that is needed to deal with those crises. So, we got together and we come up, we came up with a program with the OCHN's help. It's been instrumental. And we've come up with a co-responder program where we're going to have at least two mental health clinicians that will be able to respond when requested to assist us on scene. If they are not available, there's a mechanism where referrals can be made and they'll receive those referrals and they will do the follow-up with persons that need help, whether it's a mental health crisis or maybe a substance abuse. This is just going to be a great asset to the community. So, we've started, we started in September 3, I believe is when we went online. September 3, we went online and I can attest to at least, at least 11 referrals from Hazel Park alone that have been made. And there was one on-scene response that they had made. Unfortunately, a person, a family member had died and the wife was having some trouble dealing with that. We called them in. It was just an awesome experience. And so I'd like to stop right now and just start introducing you with, the first one with me here is Hillary. She's a supervisor with the co-responders.
Thanks so much for having us. We're really excited for you guys to meet our two co-responders who are here working in the city of Hazel Park. And as Chief Hamel says, my name is Hillary Nussbaum. I'm a co-responder supervisor. So, I'll talk a little bit just about the day-to-day operations and then I'll turn it over to Alyssa and Sabrina, who are your two new co-responders. And then we also have our Director of Justice Initiative, Siri Sikora, also here with us, so to answer any other questions that might come up. So, as a co-responder, as Chief Hamel suggested, we co-respond with police. And Sabrina and Alyssa will be in their own vehicles responding to calls because they operate in four different jurisdictions. So, they will go to calls having anything to do with mental health-related calls. So, it could be suicidal subjects, it could be welfare checks, it could be family troubles, those types of things. They have a police radio, just like police do, so they listen for those calls and they listen to all four of those jurisdictions and respond via being dispatched, or they can self-dispatch themselves, or officers can call for them to come to the scene. So, there's a number of ways for them to get to that scene. They wear a vest, just like police do, except for it's a different color, and it says "social worker" on it to make sure we're very distinguishable from police. That way people know, you know, we're not doing the same job. So, and we wear plain clothes underneath the vest as well. Again, we want to stand out, we don't want to, we want to make sure that they know we're not law enforcement coming to help them out. And the goal is really when we're on scene to get people their resources then and there to make sure that they get those mental health resources right away. Because we know that a lot of times, police don't really have any other choice but to take someone to the hospital. And even though the hospital can be helpful sometimes, oftentimes unfortunately, those people will get released half an hour later and then they're back out and they haven't really gotten the resources that they need. So, our goal is to get them the appropriate resources. So, that's one of the things we do daily operations-wise. The other thing that we do is we also do referrals. So, any police officer can fill out a referral if Sabrina or Alyssa are unavailable and it comes into like a queue for them. And then they look at those referrals and decide how they can best follow up with that individual or family member to provide those resources. So, that's a very overall picture of what we do. And there's a lot of other kind of like in-between stuff that we do as well, but that kind of gives you the bigger picture. I will let Alyssa and Sabrina kind of talk about any success stories that they may have and kind of share a little bit about that. I don't know how close. There we go. So, my name's Alyssa Waters. I'm one of your co-responders alongside Sabrina. And like Hillary said, we're out there every day working with you guys, hoping to get people connected. And one of the biggest hopes too is to help lower yours is call for service for repeated calls for individuals. So, I'm sure that Sabrina can attest to it too. We've been able to get people connected to different, you know, hospitals, treatment services, anything like that, that helps them get the resources they need so that you guys aren't responding to their house. Just for example, Chief brought up a really great case with fatalities. I'll bring and take over that one. But any sort of mental health crisis or family support crisis, I've had a couple of deaths in the field too where I've been able to, you know, help provide support to those families as well as, you know, helping kids get the resources they need to stay in school and stay out of trouble. So, anything, we're able to respond to anything that an officer thinks would be helpful to have a mental health clinician do.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sabrina. Just to speak to what Alyssa was saying, as far as lowering the calls for service, I had an incident Sunday that I responded to with officers who had been dispatched to a house a few times that day, concerned neighbors kind of thing. The third time that the call was dispatched, they requested that I come on scene and see if there was anything that I could do to assist this individual who was having issues with substance abuse. When I got to scene, they kind of briefed me what was going on, said, "We've been here a few times already today. Is there anything that you may be able to shed some light on and we can do something differently here so that we don't end up back here in another hour?" So, from that point on, I talked with the individual who was requesting rehabilitation services and through the resources that we have available to us, I was able to contact somebody who came out right then and there and transported that individual to the services that they were requesting. So, already we've seen a great turnout and it's been wonderful having the officers with us and requesting our services. So, I think it's the start of a really, really good program. So, thank you guys for having us and we are very, very, very excited.
Thank you.
At this point, we'll open it up for questions. If you guys have any questions for us.
Couple of questions. You're the only two for four jurisdictions, 24/7?
So, we work 11 to 9.
Okay.
Roughly, seven days a week. We rotate, so.
That's more reasonable. Thank you. I'm trying to figure it out solid.
Nothing overnight.
Okay, it's good.
Because we all know nothing ever happens bad overnight, right, chief?
Not at all. That's why I'm in bed.
Right. Well, thank you, it's a lot to ask and it's a wonderful program. All we hear is great things, not just our city, but other cities. We've heard really good responses from our other colleagues, you know, colleagues in other cities and they really do praise the program.
It's great.
And thank you for your efforts and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you for bringing them and thank you all for showing up here and briefing council and our residents through cable TV a little bit about the program. And we're excited to work with you and make sure this is successful for everyone.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, takes us to civic announcements. Drunken Treat coming up on the 26th, I believe that's 1 to 3.
1 to 3, Saturday, October 26, from 1 to 3 at Scout Park located at the corner of Otis and Russell.
And any other special announcements from council?
Reminder that the fire open house is October 20, 11 to 1 p.m.
And the Haunted Hazel Park Art Fair is coming up this Saturday, 11 to 6, at Green Acres.
So, lots of cool things to see and do in the city of Hazel Park in the next month.
Okay, anything else we want to announce for civic announcements? I guess closed civic announcements, open up, open discussion. We got Sarah Pitchford.
Hello, Sarah Pitchford, 334 East Bernard, Hazel Park. One year and one day of genocide attacks on our Palestinian brothers and sisters. One year and one day, our community has supported sending $18 billion in weapons to Israel. Just to put that into perspective, American annual budget for Environmental Protection Agency is 9.2, so double that annual budget. One year and one day equals 600 weapon deliveries paid for by you and me. One sent every 12 hours. One year and one day, over 75,000 tons of bombs, equal to five Hiroshima attack bombs. One year and one day, 814 mosques destroyed, 14% of the population dead, 35,000 new orphans, and yet the hostages still aren't free. Our elected officials have made it clear that protesting the genocide is illegal and in these small chambers, you all don't dare whisper the words of peace. I'm sad for our nation, our economy, our environment, and humanity overall. Please, it's been one year and one day of violent attacks at our expense and it's only getting worse. Please use your power to send a message to legislators that Hazel Park does in fact stand for peace. Call a ceasefire for humanity.
Mike Flores.
Buenos dias, good evening. My name is Mike Flores on Manatee Avenue. Once again, we are here to ask council to pass a ceasefire resolution that reflects the values of Hazel Park. Despite the ongoing tragedy, innocent Israeli civilians being held in Gaza and hundreds of innocent Palestinian children enduring years in Israeli military prisons, this council has yet to act in support of peace. Even after the Lancet Medical Journal reported over 200,000 thefts in Gaza within just over a year, this council remains unmoved. Despite nearly $25 billion of U.S. taxpayer dollars being funneled into what is increasingly being described as a genocide, we have still not seen the support for a resolution that calls for an immediate ceasefire. I struggle to find new words, new ways to move this council, but I want you to know this. We will continue to come every single meeting. We will speak during every single public comment session and we will ensure there is a digital record, a public footprint, that shows Hazel Park residents stood firm in calling for a ceasefire while this council remained silent. A call for peace is not just a reflection of global events, but of the values we hold dear in this community. If nothing else, think about the $25 billion that could have been invested in cancer research or even here in our own cities instead of fueling a genocide overseas. To illustrate, if we were to imagine that amount being distributed among the 136,000 mayors and councils members across the U.S., that's almost $200,000 per local official, officials in Hazel Park. That could easily translate into an extra $1 million for our city this year alone. Imagine that money, imagine how that money could have been used for us. Expanded arts programs, further development of our tree canopy initiatives, or even fast-tracking our walkable city infrastructure. We all know that the additional $1 million could have gone a long way to make Hazel Park an even better place to live. Yes, this is an oversimplification, but the point remains. The resources being used to fund violence abroad should be used to strengthen our communities, our schools, and our infrastructure, not fuel genocide. We deserve better. Hazel Park deserves better. Once again, I ask, when will this council move, when will this council pass a ceasefire resolution that reflects the values of peace, humanity, and community that we claim to stand for and demand that the federal government invest in us, Hazel Park? Gracias. Thank you.
Any other public announcements? Seeing none, we close public discussion. Takes to a motion to pass the consent agenda 1 through 4.
Move to pass the consent agenda, items 1 through 4.
Support. A discussion, a session. Motion passes, administrative reports, seeing none, boards and commissions, anything there? Is closure? Any council members have any ideas there? No, wait for the next meeting?
Wait for next meeting, please.
Get the approval on the one that we had from last meeting. And the boards and commissions are done. Old business, anybody? New business, anyone? I have the, it's been assigned that the new one we put up over on West End by Webster. It's not working.
Okay.
Communications from department heads, anyone?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Linda Marado.
Hi, Linda.
I'm very proud of this employee.
Hi, everyone. Mayor and council, as you are aware, the city was afforded $30,000 from OSHA back in July, I think. And we were just afforded another $130,000. So, we're working hard and diligently to make sure that our seniors who need the service, that we see them and that we get in touch with them and that we give them what they need. So, if you guys are not aware of the OSHA program, it's lawn service and snow service. And we won't be charging for this, so.
Wonderful. That's awesome.
Mr. Mayor, I want to recognize Linda for taking the initiative. Obviously, she's my office manager, but her duties have expanded way beyond that recently. And she saw a need here for this type of program and this type of funding and it's been very difficult for communities. And it's been very difficult for communities in Oakland County to find providers even to do the services. And she took on this task. She got the initial $30,000 and she did such a good job allocating net $30,000, then made more funds available to the city of Hazel Park so that we can service and help even more seniors. So thank you for your efforts.
So every city in the county, in Oakland County, was given this opportunity to apply. And a lot of cities did not partake. So the extra money they dispersed to people who were.
Participating.
Pushing for it, so. Very happy. So this money will be, we will have this money until Amanda, July 2026, two years, so.
Wonderful. I want to tell you personally that I've had a couple residents reach out. I gave them the information on how to apply. They responded to me that it was an easy process and that they were signed up for services and how grateful they were. So thank you on their behalf. Amazing work on your part. Also, I had a resident reach out to me looking for something a little bit different, but similar. They're looking for somebody to help them take out their trash. So they don't, they live in a condo, they don't necessarily need lawn services, or they live in apartment, rather, not a condo. They don't necessarily need lawn services, but I don't know how much that stretch is or other services that we could offer under that, but.
So that's a unique situation that we can possibly work with.
Okay. I did have them, I gave them your information to reach out as well.
Thank you. Please do that. So I've been working closely with DPW, because they're the ones doing all the work, and Code, Amanda and Todd from Code. So if it wasn't for these guys, I wouldn't have been able to make this happen. So it's never just me, it's always.
Such a huge resource, though. Thank you so much.
Oh, yeah, it's wonderful. I'm hoping that it continues, even though they're saying that we're not going to have any more money left. These are ARPA funds that are given to Olsha.
Wonderful.
So, that's it.
Good. Thanks, Linda.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Appreciate your.
Thank you.
Any other department heads?
News on our engine, we're going to get it tomorrow.
Yay!
We went to factory last Friday, pushing buttons. Got third-party tested yesterday. Graphic today. We're going to go pick it up in Clinton Township tomorrow.
Amazing.
So hopefully in the next three weeks or so, it'll be in service. We don't want to rush it, but we also want it in service. Once it's up and running, we'll bring it by City Hall and you guys will come to open house, it'll be there, so. And then, not to forget, we do have a smoke detector program. Thank you. Any residents, we had one come up today, any residents that want a smoke detector for their home, just come up and we'll give it to you for free and we'll install it if you need to help.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any other department heads wishing to speak?
Either one of the Toms, Jared, anything?
All right.
Thank you all for being here in case anybody had any questions.
Takes us to the city attorney.
I just wanted to say Linda did an amazing job getting the Olsha funds. It's been great working with her on that. And I know she said "we got," but she really, she pushed and got the 130 extra thousand dollars, which is amazing and allows us to really serve a lot of residents. So that's amazing. It's a really cool thing to see. And then, of course, congratulations to Chief Story and Tom on their retirement, much deserved. It's been a joy working with you all and good luck.
Same answer.
Yeah, I will just echo what Amanda said about Linda. Like I said, she is, she is a full department rank, Director of Communications and Community Services now, and she's doing a great job and you saw evidence of that. So I want to thank her for everything that she's been doing. Definitely, one more time, I will thank Tom Jones and I will thank Rich Story for the outstanding work that they did for the residents of the city of Hazel Park. Every time someone leaves, we're a little bit poor for their departure, but luckily we have the benefit of, there are many years of service and the legacy that they have left to set us in the good direction for the future. And wish them both all the best in their retirement. And, you know, maybe we will call them, who knows? So it's, they're, they're not dying, they're just retiring. So we wish them well.
Gosh.
And again, Michigan's system of municipal finance does remain fundamentally broken. We're keeping an eye on things in Lansing. We're not quite sure what's going to happen up there in terms of control or in lame duck, but we will always keep an eye on that and we'll always make sure that we're advocating for the best interest of the residents of the city of Hazel Park. So I thank you all.
Thank you. Comments from Councilman Londo?
Thank you to this body for the breast cancer awareness proclamation. My mother was diagnosed in 2006 and has been cancer-free since then and just extremely grateful for all of the awareness around this disease, early detection, early mammograms, just demonstrably saved lives. And then also grateful to this body for the domestic violence resolution. Our coresponder program is so incredible. I know that they're not here anymore, but I just really want to give them their flowers because it really assists people in getting the resources that they need then and there and also helps reduce the criminalization of mental illness. Not a lot of communities have programs like these. We're lucky to live in an area where something like that exists. Chief and Tom, I know I kind of came here in the, in the twilight of your tenure here, but it's been real and it's been fun. And I'm just really, really grateful for your leadership and everything that you've done for our residents. There's an election on November 5th. It is the last day to register to vote online and by mail is October 21st. And you can register in person up to election day, which again is November 5th.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilperson Washington?
Hello. Yes, congratulations to Tom and Chief Story on your retirement. As a person that lives with a retired human, you're going to love it. I really want to reiterate the importance to register to vote and also to vote and use your voice and your, your pen to help to push this country in the right direction because that's how we, for all of us, because it doesn't matter what party you are, it's really important to stand up for your neighbors as well. I want to thank Sarah and Mike for your words this evening, as always. And anyone else that wants to speak at any city council meeting, we are always happy to listen to you and your voice. Thank you again, Linda, for the Olsha funds, because that is amazing for senior citizens. Again, I live with one and that is put on my shoulders and my sister's. So there are a lot of people that live by themselves and senior citizens, we can learn a lot from them and they are still important citizens of this community. Publish the Equal Rights Amendment and thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, congratulations to Rich and Tom. Been a well-deserved retirement. You'll be missed and, but you've also left us in capable hands. You know, you set that thing up for us. Very happy and thankful that we have the addition of the coresponders and that light is being shed more and more commonly on the mental health issue. And to that point, if you love somebody, tell them. If you have children, hug them every day and tell them you love them. Thank you for everybody coming out and participating in the democratic process.
May I approach Tim Sullivan?
I'm going to echo everybody else's congratulations to Chief Story and Tom Jones. It's been a pleasure working with both of you. You guys have entertained some kind of wacky ideas of mine, but really showed a lot of faith and trust in the process and I really appreciate that. Our community is better off for having had you and I do hope that you really enjoy your retirement because it is very well deserved. I also look forward to working with our new chief, our new fire chief and our new head of the, Tim Young, of our DPW, who also, I, I look forward to fostering those relationships and really continuing the progress that our community has made great strides in. I also want to thank our council here for the breast cancer awareness resolution and also the domestic violence resolution. There are resources online, I'm posting them all month, but also you can find those in my link tree, which is on my Facebook page, as well as many other resources, including food resources, transportation resources, senior resources, and they're all listed by kind of the community that they're for. So it's really easily organized, you don't have to scroll through a lot and get confused. I also want to thank the coresponders and our chief of police for bringing them tonight to introduce them, introduce them to us. And I really want to thank our chief and our police department for really embracing these kind of culture-changing and progressive policies that really address the base root of many of the problems that you guys encounter. It increases the safety for not only our police department and our police officers, but also the residents in our community. And I think that's really, that says a lot about the, the ways that our city works and works hard for the residents that live here. I also want to echo the Fire Safety Week is October 6th through 12th. And the free smoke detectors are not just available now, but they're available 365 through our fire department. Just stop up and get one. I also want to remind people that early in-person voting starts October 26th. Your absentee ballots are out now, make sure to fill out both sides. There are Supreme Court justices on the back. And be sure to sign the inner sleeve or the envelope in there. We do have two drop boxes here in the city, one at City Hall and one next to the community center. You can also mail that in, it's postage paid on the envelope that it comes with, or you can drop it off in person to the city clerk, or you can wait until November 5th and vote in person as well. If you have questions about what's on the ballot, or you want to see a sample ballot, or you need to find out your polling location, maybe you're new to the city, you can visit vote.org for that information. And also want to tell everybody, make sure to be safe this Halloween. It's getting darker earlier, be sure to turn on your porch lights, make sure that your kiddos that are out trick-or-treating are well lit, have reflective items on, on themselves and, and people take, slow down a little bit as it gets darker. It's also pedestrian safety month, so let's watch out for people walking, riding, waiting for the bus.
Thank you. Got that one.
I got it all up. I had a list.
Didn't know if you were going to hit that one. Thank you.
I'm trying.
I do want to say thank you for everyone coming out this evening. And I want to say a special thank you to Linda Yona for all the hard work and getting the extra money for the programs. There's a lot of seniors out there and a lot of people that are handicapped and not can necessarily do the things that we can all normally do. Chief Story, thanks again for all your hard work. It's a lot of years and people don't receive the hours you put in that you don't get paid for during all this time and answering all the phone calls from your troops and consoling them during bad times that not everybody sees, the fire department, the firemen. And they see a lot of things that we wouldn't normally see every day. And I just want to say thank you and your gratitude goes a long ways and we appreciate that. Tom, it's been a lot of years, my friend. You went to school with my wife and you grew up here. You lost your hair. I think this job was too hard for you. But I wanted to say, it's been a pleasure. You've done a lot of great things. You volunteered a lot of events. You've grown this city with the city. We're going to miss you, just like everybody else that comes through here. But I personally am going to miss you a little more because I think you've just been, well, part of the whole community from day one. And, and I called you and harassed you on Sunday because I had a tree branch fall across my road. So just want to let you know, thank you. And I do want to point out the chief of police as well. Their department, every day goes out there, struggles and has to deal with a lot of bad people. And sometimes it's wonderful when they can get nice people. And having the coresponders there to help make those hard days better, I think that's really what it boils down to. And it also makes our police department feel better that they don't have to take them to a place where they cannot necessarily get the help that they need. And someone consoling them, talking to them and being nice and working through a program or a problem is something that we should all strive for, every one of our friends and neighbors that have a problem. I want to say that we have another Halloween coming around the corner and Alyssa alluded to be careful, get the reflectors out, a lot of pedestrians, a lot of children. Let's all be aware and be patient going down the roads, please. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.